Welcome to the Asheville City Council. If you could just take a moment and silence your cell phones and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in due diligence, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two proclamations this evening, and the first is Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month, and I'm going to join Nancy Hall at the podium. I'm going to begin by reading the proclamation. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease and is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States, and whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, Parkinson's disease is the 14th leading cause of death in the United States with an estimated 1 million people affected, and whereas there are millions of Americans who are caregivers, family members, and friends greatly impacted by Parkinson's disease, and whereas research suggests the cause of Parkinson's disease is a combination of genetic and environmental factors, but the exact cause in most individuals is still unknown, and there are no objective tests or biomarker to diagnose Parkinson's disease, and whereas there is no known cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease, and available treatments are limited in their ability to address patients' medical needs and remain effective over time, and whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's disease vary from person to person and can include tremors, slowness of movement and rigidity, gait and balance difficulty, speech and swallowing disturbances, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms, and whereas increased research, education, and community support services are needed to find more effective treatments and to provide access to quality care to those living with the disease today. Now therefore, I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Parkinson's Awareness Prevention Month in Asheville, and urge our citizens to raise their awareness of Parkinson's in order to have a significant impact on the quality of life for families living with this disease.
My name is Robert Pape. I am a member of the Asheville... I'm sorry. The Parkinson's Support Group. Mayor and members of the council, thank you. Recognition like this is so important in the fight against Parkinson's disease. Your actions will go a long way in supporting the call for a national plan to address PD. Similar plans are in place to help fund and fight cancer, Alzheimer's disease, and a number of other diseases. It is time that Parkinson's gets the same support. Neurological disorders are the leading cause of disability in the world, and Parkinson's disease is the fastest growing, surpassing the growth rate of Alzheimer's disease. Between six and seven million people are said to be living with PD today. That number could double by 2040. PD has already robbed us of too many distinguished individuals. Boxing champion Muhammad Ali, the former U.S. Attorney General Janet Reno, and Pulitzer Prize winning journalist Anthony Lewis are among them. A great deal of work has been done by many dedicated people to stop Parkinson's disease, but let's not fool ourselves. There is a great deal more to do. As someone who has been diagnosed with Parkinson's disease for more than 25 years, thank you for helping keep this such an important public issue.
Statistically, I'm Beth Pape. I'm chairman of the local support group and married to the caregiver in the family. Statistically, more than 35% of the residents of Asheville are over 50. Statistically, 96% of Parkinson's diagnoses are of people over 60. The Asheville Parkinson Support Group has 150 members out of a cohort of 1,500 statistically. These people are not sitting around waiting for someone to come along and help them. They are environmentally aware and active, as more and more research indicates that Parkinson starts with toxins sprayed for insect and weed control. They use the green spaces in Asheville for biking, strolling, and running. They use sidewalks for pole walking. They also hike, play piano, mountain bike, box, bowl, and clog in ballroom dance. Most of all, they exercise their franchise to vote. Thank you for listening.
There's going to be a very important conference. Do you want to mention?
Well, you speak into the mic because the lines of people that watch us on TV will hear you.
There's going to be a local conference at Mahack on Friday, April 20th, about Parkinson's. Dr. James Patton is a neurologist in Asheville. He is one of the speakers, and our Beth Pape, who just spoke, our Asheville Parkinson Support Group President, is going to be speaking as a care partner, and people can register to go. And the Parkinson Support Group of Asheville meets the first Tuesday of every month.
The second proclamation we have on our agenda today is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I think we have Jeff Sidoli. Did I say that right? Well, you're going to explain all of the blue pinwheels. Let me go ahead and read this proclamation first. Whereas "The problem of child abuse and neglect affects many children in Asheville and Buncombe County and has reached epidemic proportions in North Carolina with over 160,000 children reported abused, neglected, or dependent last year." And whereas "Last year, the Buncombe County Department of Health and Human Services had over 4,140 children reported abused, neglected, or dependent," and whereas "Preventing child abuse and neglect is the responsibility of all citizens." And whereas "Every child has a right to a safe, healthy, nurturing environment," and whereas "Community action is needed to help prevent child abuse so all children can have the opportunity to reach their potential." And whereas "It is vital that we reach out to parents, families, organizations, and children to increase awareness, prevent child sexual abuse, and assist children and families who have experienced child sexual abuse with the healing process." Now therefore, I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Asheville, and commend all citizens to join child protection organizations, groups, and individuals in observance of the month with appropriate programs and activities.
Thank you. And actually, I come bearing gifts if I might hand them out. So I'm handing out some pinwheels to you all, and you may have seen those pinwheels around town. And again, I'm sorry, my name's Jeff Sidoli. I'm the Executive Director at the Mountain Child Advocacy Center. We are a local nonprofit organization, and our job is really to deal and manage with all child abuse and neglect cases that come through the county. As the mayor cited, the number that we know that come through DSS is roughly over about 4,000 a year, but it's important to remember that not all child abuse actually goes through Buncombe County DSS. They're only required to deal with mandated reports of caretaker child abuse or neglect. So roughly, that's about 70%, so that leaves about another 1,000 to 1,500 cases per year that don't actually come through DSS. So if you look at the actual numbers, that's about 15 calls a day, every day of the year that we get calls about child abuse and neglect. And so the numbers are pretty staggering at times. I did want to hand out those pinwheels because you'll probably see around town, I hope you have, you'll see pinwheels across the street in front of the Family Justice Center. We had a little ceremony this morning, and the pinwheels stand for Pin Wheels for Prevention because, as we know, this is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and hopefully you'll see them around town at different places. And so our job is not only to help with the investigative part of child abuse and neglect, but also in the intervention, providing therapy services and advocacy services, but also prevention work, because ultimately, I would like to put myself out of a job, and that is our goal as we work in the county. So we reach about 10,000 kids a year through our prevention intervention services, working collaboratively with the Department of Health and Human Services, Asheville Police Department, Buncombe County Sheriff's Department, District Attorney, and Mission Hospital. So I definitely want to thank you for the opportunity of acknowledging this problem that 12 months out of the year we're focused on, but I appreciate the opportunity to come tonight and talk about this month and having some additional focus as we move through this issue and work on it throughout the year. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Next on our agenda, we have our Consent Agenda. Do I have questions, comments, or a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? And I'm adding that we are going to have a budget work session on April 24th at 3:00 in the first-floor conference room. Right, Maggie? That's what I was supposed to... That's the big yellow tag.
That's on the consent?
Yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to make one just quick comment on one of the items in the Consent Agenda, if I may. This is... One of the items is a proposal to change the name of the Finance Committee, the Finance and Human Resources Committee, and just by way of a little bit of background, this was a proposal I had made. Part of what this really is is a clarification of some of our respective council committee roles. Given the important role Human Resources plays in the city, we wanted to make sure that it was very clear that council was exercising oversight on this issue. And so in terms of the responsibilities for the Finance and Human Resources Committee would be to include issues such as employee compensation and personnel policies, so harassment and discipline would be brought to it. Any personnel matters or issues dealing with specific employees, including the manager, the attorney, or the clerk, would be handled by the Governance Committee as they currently are. So just wanted to clarify that and just explain what that was about.
I mean, we approve the Consent Agenda?
As amended.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the Consent Agenda? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we're going to have a few presentations, and the first obviously is Roder, who's going to talk to us about prioritizing equity in planning and investing in recreational facilities and programs.
She's just watching. Yeah. That is a weird... Justice is blind. Justice. She's kind of peeking. I give you mayor, council. Thank you for allowing me to come before you to discuss the equity program in our department. The last three years, we've been working towards equity in our department. I'm going to carry through the process that we went through, looking at how we make equitable services and facilities, and also the guidelines that we use to come up with that criteria. Equity Racial Action Plan consists of five different goals. These goals are intended to allow us to meet the needs of the community. The first goal is creating and developing a culture that values and advances racial equity, creating an effective and inclusive government that engages all communities, creating a park recreation workforce that reflects the diversity of the community across the whole organization, investments in contracting and procurements that benefit the diversity of the community, and providing programs and services that are responsive and reflective to the community needs. So these were our guidelines in what our department will follow for the next four years in terms of trying to meet the equity goals of the community. So when we look at building equity in parks and recreational investments, we look at the impact of allocation and those decisions. Those decisions have impact down the line. Also, understanding what social equity is and the methods of those allocations, and also determining which methods to use depending on the decisions that we're going to make. What's the impact of allocation decisions? Why is the distribution of public services important? Well, without a system of resources, you're going to create winners and losers between residents, and we don't want to do that. We want to be able to have everyone have access to all facilities and services and not pick one group over the other. It's also a means of distributional differences, eliminating those potential when you look at the different programs and offerings. This slide kind of indicates the difference between equality and equity. Equality is the sameness, and equity is the fairness. So you have to have equity before you can get equality. You've got to make sure that everyone has access to services and programs before you can try to turn on the same, because some individuals have barriers in terms of access to programs and services. So this is another one. We want to eliminate the barriers. That's our overall goal. Remove those unnecessary barriers. As you can see here, using analogy, looking at a football game, of course, because it's parks recreation, you can see how different... Depends on where you're sitting, you have different viewpoints. So this kind of illustrates that picture in terms of how we apply it in recreation. So one of the things that we developed to eliminate those barriers was called a criteria-based allocation method, to develop policies, equality, and diversity in service provision that outlines how we ensure that our services are relevant, responsive, and sensitive to the needs of our existing and future customers, and that all sections of the community in which we work have equal access to those services. Part of that scoring matrix was in the packet. It outlines the different criteria we use. Within this method of prioritizing, we look at projects in terms of investments and rehab projects, and also programs and services. And these projects, these criterias combine, looking at characteristics over different data sources. We use the U.S. Census as a baseline because that can't be disputed. The numbers are what they are. So when it comes to our allocation for facilities, we'll get the community characteristics, which are the racial, concentrated areas of poverty, youth population, population density, and neighborhood safety, and we add that to the park characteristics, asset lifecycle, lifespan, asset condition, and proportionary value of investments. Those equal what we've invested in those projects. So that's how we kind of rank the projects based off of weighted scale of which ones we look at when we have investments to be made. On the same end, with programs and services, we'll get the same community characteristics, but then we add for the program characteristics, the service category rankings, which is in your packet as well, priority-based budgeting, which the city is going to, looking at the quadrants and how we fund each one, program gaps as identified through focus groups in the community, and city council goals. So we roll these into those characteristics to determine where we place resources for community programming and services. Walking you through the criteria, there's seven measures total, a total of 23 points. Our focus is creating dynamic parks and programs that shape the character and meet the diverse needs of the community. That's our focus and our goal with these criteria-based. Looking at the seven measures, the community characteristics don't change. Those are the characteristics we use based off of census data that give us that information. Once you get down to criteria four, five, and six, depends on if it's programs or facilities, it changes. Racial concentrated area of poverty has five total points, neighborhood population density has three, youth population of the neighborhood has two, neighborhood crime statistics has two. That gives you a total of 12 out of the 23. Program characteristics, we look at service category rankings, we look at priority-based budgeting and program gaps. When it comes to park characteristics, we look at asset condition, age of the asset, and proportionary value, which is the value that we've invested over the lifecycle of that facility. You look at the second page of your handout, and you look at the cost recovery model, which is looking at how we allocate that. The Finance Committee, city council's Finance Committee, and the Recreation Board and staff went through a process that slated which programs and which services should be high on the scale from cost recovery standpoint. So as you move up the scale in terms of more individualized programs and services, you would then return your value and expect more money from those participants using those programs. On the lower end, the programs that subsidize our programs with meets the needs of the community in overall basis. So kind of that's our overall criteria for it. I'm going to give you some of the things that we have in progress right now. Using the census tract, we looked at neighborhood park facilities within each neighborhood, within each census tract, and we mapped that. That's included in your packet. We mapped out those different facilities that support each neighborhood. Using the map, we created service districts to track the equity investments, programs, and services, so that we're tracking every single dime the department spends on programs and services. We'll be able to tell you what facility went to, what program, and what improvements was made with that. We also, using the Neighborhood Recreational Service Plans, we're developing Neighborhood Recreational Service Plans for each service district. So we're getting away from having a citywide master plan. In the old tradition, we would throw out surveys to all community members, have them fill it out, and go, okay, here's what we need. Some neighborhoods were getting left out. If you don't know how to engage in the process, or you don't know how to be involved, your voice wasn't being heard, but that park you have in your neighborhood still needs the same services. So we're moving to a different base of where we're looking at neighborhoods and how we build a service plan off of the facilities that serve that neighborhood within a two-mile radius, or one-mile radius. So it's meeting that need, and we're not duplicating programs, because what's good on one side of town may not be good for the other side of town. So we're letting the residents lead that process and developing prices, strategies for programs and services, which we have in your packet. We also have ongoing engineering and reallocation within my department, looking at how do we reallocate resources to meet equity needs in terms of having staff in the right place to deliver the services and implement the action plan that's in front of you. We also, in the progress, educating staff on equality and education, with education and training in connection with the Equity Office, to be able to get staff up to speed on how we implement equity through our program. Community engagement efforts, we're revamping how we engage with the community. One of the things that we are looking to is having the community help us design the engagement process, helping us map out versus the city coming in saying, here's how many meetings we're going to have, here's how we're going to reach out to the community. We're having the community design that process. We have hands-on workshop where the citizens actually will work through whatever the issue or whatever the design is, they'll actually take part in that. We've used this process in Shiloh and the Grant Center, the process of trying to decide Walton Street Pool and the New Community Center, we've actually gone through this process where the community helped engage the first stage of it. The second stage, we did the developmental workshops. Now we're taking those results, the consultant, and looking at what's feasible and what's not feasible, so then we can come back to the community without ruling out any ideas that was proposed. So we're using all the ideas of the community. In years past, the city would go off, would come back with the final design and say, hey, here's what we're going to build. In this case, what we want to do is change that model and use all of the input we got from the citizens, and then say, here are the ones that can be implemented, and here's why they can't be implemented, based off of whatever the criteria or whatever their constraints are at constructing that facility. Also, we're working on developing a database of small business owners. Up under, by state statute, under a certain dollar amount, we can work with local small businesses. A lot of the work that we do, painting fences, repairing fences, we can look at how do we use that leverage for community-based small minority businesses to get them experience working with the city. A lot of them don't have experience working with the city, but how can we help do that and also get some of the things done that we need to? We also have in progress the community benefit agreements, working with the school system, but the city and county to offer programs and make facility improvements used by the community. One is Asheville Middle, looking at how we can get, use that facility, make some investments in the actual athletic facilities there, and also how can we build the program with the students there. Also, in South Asheville, Valley Springs, we know that we have a program gap in South Asheville, so working with the school there to look at how we can expand programming, do some type of fitness program, some type of other programming that's missing right now in that void. So those are the two community benefit agreements. We're not calling MOUs anymore, partnership agreements. It's looking at community benefit agreements of how we're benefiting the community on both ends versus us just having a partnership. Creating additional summer camps, this year we created additional summer camps for underserved youth 1 through 6 and 7 and 8 graders. We're also offering this year a nature summer camp at the Nature Center for youth identified in underserved areas. That's a week-long camp where normally it would be $200 to $300 a week participating in that camp. We're making it available for kids that would never have the opportunity to be able to participate with that. Also, we're creating, we created last year a free neighborhood swimming camp at Walton Street Pool that was implemented last year as well, and we offer a year-round YWCA swim program that started last month, offering that year-round for residents as well. Also, the Help Support the Fire Department Middle School Camp, we work closely with the fire department with promoting that. Also, working with APD and the fire department to continue to engage our participants in our programs in summer camp and after school, exposing them to being a firefighter or police officer, what that entails, to come out and talk to the kids on a regular basis, and that helps them gain knowledge of those professions. Also, working with KALA and In Real Life to provide facilities and activities, staying connected with that relationship we have with those two programs. uh, to stay connected with that relationship we have with those two programs, to make sure that we're benefiting and working towards, um, the, the achievement gap and working with the students. Continue to, uh, continue to conduct youth focus groups. We did a focus group with students around the walk-through process to find out what the community needs. We also had done other focus groups, looking at what gaps are we meeting in terms of youth. Um, we hear from adults a lot, but we want to hear from the youth so that we're gearing our programs and services towards the users of those programs and services. Couple of future items, um, what we would like to do is we're looking at how do we provide access and, and equity? And one of the things we identified was there are no bus routes currently at Rick Park. We have the nature center, and we also have the soccer complex that we try to reach inner-city kids with, but it's not only bus lot. So one of the things going through the transit master plan update, we're looking at how can we get a bus stop at the nature center and the soccer complex to bridge that gap? So that's one of the things that we're working on. And also looking at a youth development program where we would develop and build our own, uh, work pool, workforce. We have a lot of positions now that are seasonal, that can turn into a full-time, but kids coming out of high school don't have the experience. So what we want to do is work them in middle school, um, learn civic classes, learn how government works, learn different, uh, budgeting responsibilities, and then also get hands-on job training. Years ago, we used to have a workforce program, but this will be more geared towards getting them hands-on skills, um, so that over a period of years, they've worked with the city, so when they graduate high school, they can come in as a seasonal, and we know that they've been involved with the department and have that training. Right now, there's a deficit for us finding skilled staff to be able to do some of the trades work. They don't, no longer offer that at school. So those are the things that we're working towards equity. Um, our desire in is to make sure that our parks are, uh, allocations are more equitable and distribute throughout our public parks and recreational, uh, resources. Um, and I'll take any questions if you have any comments or feedback or you follow us.
I don't have any questions. I, when I first came on board on council, slightly, shortly after that, you all started doing some of this work, and I'm just really thrilled that I was turned out so far, and hopefully it progresses, and, um, I'm happy with the results. I don't know how everybody else feels, but it's, it's moving in the right direction, and this is good to see, um, especially how you've kind of, I was there when we, when you all started doing the, the point system and how everything is gonna be equitable, and really, I'm just giving kudos, so thank you for the work.
Yeah, Rodarc, I would second that. I think it's great. Um, I think it was my idea to impose upon you to come talk to full council. We heard this at finance, is that where we heard it? PED somewhere? Anyway, it's, I think it's great. You, you guys are doing fantastic work. Um, I, and I love the, the workforce development piece of it as well. That's just great. Um, quick, quick question. So I know recently there were some public outreach sessions around Aston Park, and you all tried some new strategies around engaging people was, that I think sort of came from this strategy. Was that successful?
Yes, um, we're still going through that process now, but we feel like, um, it's being successful at this point, don't wanna jinx it. Um, kind of what we learned from the first process is we had city staff, even though the, the community was running the process, city staff was still seen at the forefront. Um, so this, with the Aston Park group, we looked at having outside facilitator lead that conversation, and it's worked out a lot better, so that staff is totally removed from being the focal point. Um, so I think it is a better process, and we'll continue to tweak. And this is an ongoing, um, dynamic that we have in the community. Community evolves, we wanna evolve with the community and not stay status quo, um, and look at doing things different, um, to make sure that we're staying in line with the community.
Great. Thank you.
I have a question for you. Is perceived that the outdoor swimming camp, um, was not very popular last summer? The community members, um, didn't think that equity was quite at play there because the outdoor free program, um, was just for individuals who were low income, but the paid, um, slots were at the grant center, and even when it rained, children were outside, and they kind of complained about the lack of programming. Um, did you get that feedback? And if so, um, how are you looking to kind of relieve that this year?
Yes, we, we received that feedback last year, and kind of, um, looking at it from a staff perspective, we wanted to offer something, um, to the underserved areas. Um, we do offer a, a program that, that charges. Um, when we implemented it last year, we did not remove one group versus the other. We tried to make available the space that we have, and up at the pool was, uh, the area that we had located. Um, going forward, trying to find, identify spots and locations. Um, one of the things that, uh, we would like to come back to, uh, finance committee with in the future is, once we look at this Walton Street Pool, how do we reduce, either reduce the cost or make it a no-cost facility for community use? Um, that will address some of the issues that we have there, because they have to pay to get in the pool, have to pay to be in the after school with some camp program, and that's where that gap is. Um, so, uh, technical-wise, we were trying to, to, we were trying to help on both ends. Um, the perception of it is, these kids are left outdoors and these kids are indoors, and that's not the, the, you know, every good deed, let's call it, unpunished.
So my question is, when, when there is bad weather, what are our options?
Right. This year, we're gonna make sure that they have options to go inside. We have the same issue at Malvin Hills Pool, we did the outdoor program there, so we're looking, making the closest available facility, uh, for them to come inside.
Okay. Um, another question, you talked about your, um, youth workforce development. Um, are you looking into any options where you can offer a small stipend once they're in the program for, uh, a number of years or show some consistency?
Correct. That was the conversation that we had with community members. We worked with, uh, Dwayne Barton, we worked also with AV Tech, uh, to look at how do we implement this? And one of the strategies that I was proposing that we do is, we have city, uh, workers in our maintenance department, for instance, that have different skills and trades, and they would love to be able to come on the recreation program side and teach kids how to do it. Um, but we don't, we're, we're not able as a government agency to pay kids to do that. So if we can get businesses to sponsor, um, the kids to stay in the program, um, and they have to meet certain criteria, then they receive a stipend, that's giving them incentives versus just trying to offer a program for them to sign up. Uh, because after a while, they have no incentive to, to do it if they're not making, um, some money off of it, off the program. So we're looking at doing that as a way for businesses then to know that their money is not going overhead, it's actually going to the participants in the program.
Will it be, um, will it be appropriate to go after federal funds? Because I know that the Department of Labor would be interested.
Whatever structure we need, we're, uh, in the process of trying to get that off the ground. Uh, we're trying to reallocate staff we have within a department because we didn't have a dedicated staff person to oversee this, but we think this program is gonna take a dedicated staff person to be able to give it the benefits, to come up to curriculum for the kids, and come, uh, to make sure that, um, all the areas that need, work with the counselors at the school system, um, identifying the participants in that program, so as we move them along there on the track. And we want to do a different track each year so that you're not doing the same thing at each age group. So, you know, the sixth, seventh, eighth graders would be on one track, and then the high schools would be on another track. Um, we also have the opportunity with so many departments in the city, if we identify youth and say, hey, I wanna be in finance, or I wanna work in, um, legal, we have the resources to match them up with a, a job shadowing, so they actually get hands-on experience. Uh, no other program can offer that, but as a city, we can because we have so many different areas that kids may be interested in to get them, um, experience, uh, to see what it's like.
I like what you outlined about your, um, community engagement process, because I know it's probably been trial and error, and take a lot of bumps and bruises. Um, just wanna say kudos to you for being creative and listening.
Thank you.
All right, Amber, come talk to us about the Office of Sustainability annual report.
She does this for everybody.
All right, there we go. Madam Mayor, City Council, Amber Weaver, Office of Sustainability. Um, today, uh, this evening, I would like to present to you an update for the fiscal year of 17 on the Office of Sustainability and, uh, some of the work plans and the work that we do from day to day. So just for a quick review, I wanted to bring to your attention and to the newcomers that in 2009, the Office of Sustainability adopted a sustainability management plan that has eight focus areas and 107 action items, and we work on those daily, uh, throughout the year to make improvements for the city's sustainability goals. Over the last few years, there's been some new additions. You'll see Food Policy Action Plan, which is in its second iteration and was adopted in 2017. You have a Energy Innovation Task Force that was added, uh, in 2018, and we're presently in the process of doing some climate resiliency work as well. Below there, you see all the resolutions that fall with, fall under our office and what we work on. We'll give you a quick review on how we're moving through those resolutions, uh, and many of them also, again, fall within the sustainability management plan. To begin, I wanted to highlight some of the achievements for fiscal year 2017 for the climate resiliency assessment. Uh, staff has worked with NIMAC, and we were able to complete the first three steps of the five-step process. In addition to that, we've been working with the comprehensive plan living Asheville to make sure that those additions are folded into the comprehensive plan, and it will also be, um, an, an attachment as well. Um, things that are happening now in FY18, we are presently, uh, finalizing the draft for review and bringing it to the executive team here, hopefully, um, later this month. We're also working with the IT department to figure out how we can provide this information that we've been working on to the public for public consumption, and also working with GARE and USDN for equity, utilizing equity lens on this work and how we'd like to engage the public. And we also have some staff trainings. What you see here is just a quick glimpse of, uh, allocation of funding that's been made from year to year. You'll see 2017, um, does not have money allocated, and that is because in 2016, the work overlapped. Uh, and the contract again is with, uh, NIMAC. I'm gonna show you some of the contracts and the partnerships as well, so you can see, uh, how we're spending some funds. Moving on to the waste reduction goal, I want to point out here, the waste audit. Um, I love the waste audit, we look at it all the time, it's how we make our important decisions. Uh, you'll see here that 26% of the waste audit is, waste audit, excuse me, is organic waste, and 18% is recycling. So that is, when we're looking at the projects, we're working on our 50% waste reduction goal, that is what we're looking at. That is what we're trying to remove from the waste stream. Um, in 2017, we brought on, uh, we've worked with, uh, the housing authority, Asheville Green Works, and Curbside Recycling or MRF to partner it with public housing residents to provide them with recycling. Um, and we've also did composting workshops for backyard composting. Of course, our city is really interested in curbside recycling, but in the meantime, in the interim, what we can do is be teaching, uh, our residents how to compost. Uh, for 2018, for 2018, uh, notable achievements here and things that we've been working on throughout this fiscal calendar year is adding the last of public housing. There's going, there's triple-stream composting bins at U.S. Cellular Center. We're hoping to get that program launched here by the end of the month as well, and we have additional backyard composting workshops that we're engaging Asheville Green Works with.
I have a question about composting.
Sure.
Um, there's a way you can make money from composting, right?
Yes and no. I mean, that, that's a very, I would need more to that question. Yes, you can make money from composting. People do it, yes.
Okay. I was just wanting to know if that was a part of the conversation and a part of an incentive for communities to start?
Hmm, I don't know that we've explored necessarily how the city would make money on composting.
Oh, individuals.
Oh, individuals, yes. There's, there's compost now, which is in business, and they pick up from residents. And I think that there's opportunities, um, to work with maybe community gardens and the community garden network to figure out ways in helping to figure, helping to bring jobs into that arena. And then also, we work with Danny's Dumpster, and he's been very successful as well in, uh, composts on city property. Um, what I'd like to point out here in this particular slide is, you can see from 2016 to 2017, we actually slipped and then had lost traction with our waste goal. Our waste goal is 50%. You can see that we dipped down, which is, uh, very concerning to us, um, and-
Wait, our waste reduction goal, goal?
That's right. So the waste reduction goal is 50% by 2035. You can see in 2016, we had achieved 6.93% of that goal, and we slipped last year to 5.2, 5.02%. We are looking at those numbers very closely and trying to assess why that is. There has been growth, residential growth, which contributes to that.
Is it a per capita rate, or is it a bulk, just the total?
Pickups, pickups.
Just the total?
Residential pickups.
So it seems like that's hard to do with a growing city.
It is, yes.
If you're, I mean, without implementing new programs.
That's right. That's absolutely right. Is now the time where I point out that in FY19, we have money that we've requested?
I'm gonna ask that question later, so you might as well answer it now.
So, absolutely, that's correct. So, uh, let's back up just a second. One, some of the things that we think that are contributing to slipping on our goal is, one, we have growth that's happening, and two, we also service commercial, uh, businesses, and the commercial businesses that we do service, we don't provide recycling for. So there's not an offset there. We just take the waste, and then they have an independent contract with curbside management. So that too can skew the numbers. Um, I do work closely with the sanitation division manager, um, and what has been put into the FY19 budget to address these, that our goal and a long-range work plan is to have a solid waste management plan. Uh, so I'm sure you've read that already, or you will learn more about that, but the goal is to use all the data that we've gathered over the past years for Pay As You Throw and our organics feasibility study, and to be able to incorporate that into a long-range plan, where we're working on this goal, working on how we can compost, is that something, are there businesses that could, we could partner with, public partnerships? So there is potential for growth and room to grow in that area.
Do we also need to revisit our goal? I mean, is this a realistic goal? You mean, even if we were to implement all the greatest, newest?
We've also discussed looking at the goal and revising it and what that could mean. What we'd like to do is we'd be, like to begin with rewriting our ordinance.
Sorry.
Yeah, so on that, on that point, um, we do not require multifamily developments to have recycling, is that right?
That's correct.
Is, is that something that we can relook at in our ordinance?
In the ordinance, yes, ma'am.
Fantastic, okay. Um, and you may have mentioned this, but the, uh, the, the, the study with the county, the comp-
Feasibility study.
Right. Can you just say a little bit about that in terms of where we are and what we know and what's next?
So the intention of the compost feasibility study was to work with the county and try to figure out an option for curbside organics pickup, and what we found out in the first phase of the study is that there was not enough feedstock from the residents. When I say feedstock, I mean, there was not enough compost to be picked up residentially to make that type of investment with the county. Uh, and they chose to, to use an anaerobic digester. Um, and then a couple of years ago, when I came on, we wanted to do a second phase, which was to gather data about all the feedstock within the city. So that includes industrial, which would be hospitals, um, grocery stores, as well as commercial, to see if that, and if, if that amount, in addition to the residential amount, would be significant enough to make that type of investment. Um, the data that, what, the data that came out of that result is what we'd like to move forward into the solid waste management plan, when we're looking at rewriting an ordinance and figuring out the longevity and a long-range plan for the sanitation division, and potentially rewriting a goal for the 50% waste reduction as well, and the ordinance. So there's, there's several little pieces there.
And let me also mention, people may not remember this, but a few years ago, we started stepping up our solid waste fees in anticipation of implementing a more robust recycling program, so we were sort of increasing the fees, um, to, to help cover the costs of the program, um, and, and, and so that this, not, and so that everybody in the city wasn't subsidizing everybody else. Um, you were paying for it more as a utility, like you do water and electricity, um, rather than just a general service, but the idea was to raise those fees sufficiently so- than just a general service. But the idea was to raise those fees sufficiently so that when, when we created a program, that a more robust recycling program, that would create an incentive for people to participate in that. And we-
Pay-as-you-throw.
Pay-as-you-throw is the name of that program. And that has, that was researched significantly by the staff and outside consultants and SACE for at least two years, probably more. And we, we've just, the, the, the action that we've taken has been not to move forward with that program. But I think those programs, where they have been implemented and implemented well, they show, they result in significant increase, a significant increase in recyclables. And so, in my view, that is still an option that is out there for us. It's not, it has not been the solid waste staff's recommendation. They wanted, the staff person, they wanted to do some other stuff first, but-
If I may?
Yeah, please.
I would, I would include in that, that the solid waste, in order for a pay-as-you-throw program to be successful, you have to be paying the true amount of what it costs to pick up waste per household. And that is guesstimated by the sanitation division and public works department at $22. And so, we're not there yet. But in order to be able to have a pay-as-you-throw program, you would want to have, you would want to be capturing that fee. So then you could offer a lesser amount if you're throwing away a lesser amount, similar to a utility bill where you pay for your electricity. If you are throwing away three bags of trash, you'll be charged three. If Julie's throwing away one bag of trash, she will be charged one bag.
Where, what, what?
Where are we now?
We still subsidize trash pickup significantly.
Yes.
Isn't it, it's like a half, a half or something?
I don't know where we are. From the general fund.
We're going to do fees and charges later on in this meeting. So, so that's interesting. So you actually have to be already charging the full cost of the service so that you've got the room to, to, because you're going to lose revenue.
Right. So, so when the idea can-
Trying to incentivize the various people to reduce their waste.
And when we began, the fee was $7.50. Can't incentivize based on that number. So we're, we're slowly trying to move it up. Now, there's also, right, the equity issue and affordable housing that comes into play. But, you know, the incentive is, is if you throw away less and recycle more, which is a free option that we provide, or an option, excuse me, that we provide, then you would be able to have a lower rate.
You know, I'm still curious about exploring it. I mean, I know that it would mean, it's got a lot of moving parts because our tipping fee would go down too. I mean, so there would be some, I mean, I'm a little, I'm not totally convinced we'd have to bring, we'd have to actually already be charging the full amount. I don't understand how that would, why you would do that. But, I mean, I understand the theory. But there's going to be other savings if you, but, but I, I'm still very wary. I mean, I'm still, I have like PTSD from when we took away leaf vacuuming, so I, I can't, I mean, that, this is a far more radical change.
It is.
A far more radical change. I mean, so, I mean, I'm-
I feel like my job is to also advocate for a solid waste management plan.
Yes, okay.
All right?
Keep going.
Many cities have solid waste management plans. It's a long-range plan on how you want to run that particular department or an enterprise fund. And that is there so you can have, no, figure out how to constantly be bringing in the revenues that you need to bring, lowering the amount of waste that you are putting in your landfill. Right? We have 30 years left in our landfill in Buncombe County, 3035.
Let me just ask one more question about waste, if I can.
Okay.
Where, in, in terms of all the priorities that you have, is that your office has, where, where does this one fall? And, and I also realize that maybe the answer is, it just needs to go to solid waste instead of stay under your office, but-
This slide shows what we are able to do.
Okay. What you, as a sustainability officer, are able to do.
Right.
So you think the next big gains really need to come out of solid waste? Is that-
Absolutely. Well, not, the benefit of the solid waste division and being able to have a solid waste management plan and having a waste reduction specialist is that they understand the operations. We're not in the operations day-to-day. Our job is to help, promote, and suggest more sustainable ways of going about, in this particular case, their operations. But we're not into the day-to-day operations and making changes there. So that's why-
Great.
We depend on the solid, the solid, excuse me, the sanitation division to do those things.
Okay.
Yep?
Okay.
Ready to leave waste? That was a good conversation. Thank you. Okay. Food policy. All right. So, notable fiscal year 2017 achievements for food policy. There's a, there was a food policy action plan that was adopted in 2013, and the goal was to update the food policy action plan for 20, to, to, to update the plan overall, excuse me. And so, some of the things that took place in that year is, we also created a community garden program, adopt a spot program. There are a lot of edibles on city property, and this is a, provides us the ability to properly manage them with the help of Asheville Green Works. And we also created a webpage to, for people to land on, because many times, they were having to go to different departments and therefore receiving different type of answers. So this is a way to fold it all into a nice program where people could go to one place to receive their information. Things that we're working on this year, we of course passed the 2017 food policy action plan in November of 2017. And we're also working with additional groups to help us oversee the edibles program as well. Let me show you this next slide, so you can kind of see the funding that's increased over the years. You can see in 2016, there was not any funding allocated to food policy, and how it's increased. And what we've been able to do is have the Asheville-Buncombe Food Policy Council help us implement the food policy action plan. We are working with Bountiful Cities to help manage our community gardens, and we work with Asheville Green Works to help us manage the adopt a spot program. This is the best options for a staff of two, to help take care of all of the things under our food policy umbrella. In the future, you'll be seeing us try to really hone in on defining who we are in the food policy system, and what it is that we want to, what we do well, and what we'll be working on. So we're, be working towards metrics and creating metrics on how we're moving forward, and we'll be, hopefully, we will be growing more food. Okay?
Amber, can I ask how many spots have been adopted?
There are 10 in the pipeline.
Great. That's great.
And we just received an application for Weaver Park for the community garden program. Hopefully, you guys have seen Elder and Sage. It's very successful. All right. At this time, I'd like to call up Bridget Herring. She's the energy program coordinator for the Office of Sustainability. She's going to talk to you council about carbon and her carbon goals.
Good evening. So, just to give you a little overview on some of our achievements, in the past year, we've achieved just over 30% of our 80% carbon reduction goal. And in this past year, that was a little over 1% from the baseline. I think something of note is that we've leveraged over $130,000 in Duke Energy Rebates to fund some of our upgrades, which is also yielding an estimate of $38,000 in avoided annual energy costs. So, to give your attention to this graph, the blue line is our baseline. So that's where we are trying to get 80% below to achieve our carbon goal. The red line is the target. So if we're on track, that's the line that we would be following. And the reason why it moves is that we updated our goal. We had a 2% annual reduction goal. When we moved to 4%, that's when you see the red line kind of tilt downwards. And then the orange line below is our actual reductions. So, you can see, we've been doing pretty good. Where you see the biggest gap between the target and the actual is because of the street light replacement. But unfortunately, as you can see, in this current year, we are no longer exceeding our target, and we've gone above that. So, for just about 249 tons of carbon in this past year, for the first time, we're no longer meeting our target.
Our goal is no trash and no carbon.
Right.
And it's hard to get there.
It's a magical place.
Yes.
Anytime now. So, one of the biggest challenges with achieving this 4% goal is offsetting the growing emissions of the city. So this bar graph right here gives you an idea of all of our different emissions that we track and how they've changed over the years. So some of them, you can see, have stayed relatively the same. So like, the pink line is gasoline, blue is natural gas. You can see those have been relatively steady over the years. Purple, where you see it go from big to little, that's the streetlights. That's the biggest investment we've made in carbon reduction. But the green section, which is electricity, is actually starting to grow. So, we're seeing that because we're expanding some of our services, right? Like, we're adding more streetlights to parks so that families can enjoy them in the evenings. We're lighting up greenways and red tip. Adding some additional facilities online is going to increase that demand, as well as transitioning our fleet to electric buses. We're going to start to see that grow. And the second area where we're really seeing growth is in that bottom section, which is the orange, and that's our employee commute. So, as we've seen the city grow, we've seen some staff increase. We're also seeing employees move further away from the city. So only 25% of city employees live within the city limits. And, you know, they're just getting further and further away. So those emissions are continuing to grow. So, while we see those things increase, we're not only trying to get 4% from the baseline, but we're trying to offset those additional emissions that are coming online. So, any questions about carbon?
I, I do have a couple. Maybe you're going to get there, but it's sort of the, the what's next. I mean, I know, and just to remind council, council funded in this year's budget some energy audits of city facilities. And so my question to you is, you know, do you, are you anticipating that those audits will sort of tee up a good set of projects that are going to help us get back on track on that and, and have the yellow line be under the red line? Or if, and what do you, what do you need from us to make sure that we get back on track, really?
I will say, you know, we're looking at every option, right? So the, the thing that made the streetlights get that nice big curve, where you see that big gap, is we changed out every single streetlight, and we spent $2.5 million to do it. So now, we're looking at a budget, an annual budget, that's about $250,000. So, as you look at the investment, and if we like take a building at a time, and you're doing smaller projects, it's more, you know, economical, but you're not going to see the bigger gains. So I can't say right now that I have another golden egg. I think that's what Maggie used to call her streetlights. But I do think we have a lot of projects that are coming up that are going to inform what our options are for installing renewable energy on city property, for making our facilities more energy efficient, for transitioning into higher efficient vehicles for our fleet. So, I think we are continuing to look for that, but I think it's going to continue to be a challenge to find something that's going to get us those big chunks unless we invest in something citywide, or put a lot more investment into it.
And just mentioning about the green fund, I think there may be some folks who don't know about the green fund.
So there's actually a slide about the green revolving fund at the very end. So, I'm going to wait on that one, if that's okay. So, we also have some community energy initiatives as well. So the community clean energy policy framework, there's a lot of words up here, but the notable achievements that I think really stand out is through this work, the energy innovation task force was born out of it. And we've also achieved our Soul Smart Gold designation. So we're one of a handful of the cities in the southeast that has achieved this designation. It's a program that's run through the Department of Energy, where we look at what we have control over when it comes to our community being able to install solar, renewable energy, and react to it and be prepared for it. So, part of that designation, we did a bunch of training with our first responders on what you do if you show up. And there's panels on a building that's on fire, if a panel's on fire. So being able to respond to that safely, which as people start to install more of these is important to do, as well as looking at one of our permitting fees, streamlining that system for our residents to make that a little bit easier and more accessible. I think the other notable thing is that because the energy innovation task force came out of this, we've kind of brought the clean energy, clean, community clean energy policy framework. It's a mouthful, thankfully, to a close. So we're not going to see any more resources going to that. We're transitioning more into funding the energy innovation task force. So, one thing we can take off the list, which is plus, right? So, the energy innovation task force, I know you've heard a lot of reports about it. Just wanted to highlight, the biggest things for me is that it officially was launched. It's very exciting. And we've also had a lot of really great partnerships come out of with Buncombe County that I think has just been great to see resources coming together. And so, this past year, you allocated $205,000 out of the general fund. Part of that helped facilitate some of that Soul Smart designation, where we did some education for our first responders and building officials. We also got some energy audits out of that. We're doing some solar structural assessments on buildings to see what additional, you know, electrical upfits or structural reinforcements would be needed to install solar on a rooftop, not just a new roof, so we can quantify some of those costs. But then, we have the partnership with Buncombe County for some commercial retrofits, the low-income weatherization program as well. So, and jointly funding the Green Builds Alliance to manage the Blue Horizons project as well. So, and with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Amber to wrap up.
Thank you, Bridget. I think what we'd like to do is to summarize this particular, this last slide that we have, is to kind of show you how we're, how our resources are being allocated and where they're going. So, throughout the slides, we showed you funding from year to year. And this is a graph to be able to show you how the funding's being spent with the green revolving fund. Councilwoman Mayfield asked about the green revolving fund. The Office of Sustainability uses the green revolving fund to address additional energy efficiency, renewable goals, it's supposed, projects rather, to go towards our 80% carbon reduction goal. But what we've seen over the years is that we also use that funding for the waste reduction goal, the food policy action plan, the community clean energy policy framework, which Bridget mentioned is coming, came to an end, and the climate resiliency work.
That is the end of the presentation.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys. All right. We have one final presentation tonight, or report. I-26 widening project from NC 280, which is Airport Road, where the famous diverging diamond is located, to the I-40 bridge replacement over the French Broad River. And I have a possible name, so you're just going to need to introduce yourself.
David Uchiyama, Communications Officer.
With DOT, I presume?
Yes. Based in Asheville, covers three divisions from Mount Airy to Murphy. Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor. The I-26 widening from US 25 south of Hendersonville to I-240, I-40 junction, south of Asheville, is a high priority for NC DOT. We're here today to focus, there we go, on one specific aspect of that project, and that is the replacement of the bridges over the French Broad River, and the potential impacts that the work there may have on the river users. I-26 will be widened to four lanes in both directions from US 25 in Henderson County up to I-40, I-40. This includes the two bridges over the French Broad River that I just mentioned, and the two bridges will be replaced with one single span. It was necessary to determine the methods for building the new bridge and taking down the old ones before we begin construction.
So these, the, the location is between the Long Shoals exit and the Outlet Mall exit?
You are correct.
Is that right? Okay. Just to put this in common parlance. All right. Thank you.
Very good. Yes. And, back to it, it's important for NC DOT to implement safety procedures and alternatives for river users during the project. None of the construction will impact safety downstream of the river. So nothing on Amboy or anything closer to downtown. NC DOT will provide a safe passage lane in the water for river users that will include- NC DOT will provide a safe passage lane in the water for river users that will include the floating navigational guides to reduce the risk of accidents. NC DOT will also require the contractor to install a catchment device on the structure to prevent construction material from simply falling. While developing these initial safety plans, NC DOT found that there is no easy way to provide portage around the construction zone. The closest public pullout is at Bank Creek River Park, about a mile upstream of the bridges. From there, boaters would then have to drive about six miles north on NC-191 to reach the next public put-in at Hominy Creek Park. Although it could be possible to provide a pullout and put-in at the bridge, that would require users to walk underneath an active construction zone. Providing the safe passage lane for the duration of the construction is safer and more reasonable for anyone in a kayak or canoe or a raft. NC DOT recognizes that boat trips can begin well upstream as far as the headwaters all the way in Pennsylvania County. Public access points are located at Westfield Park and Horseshoe Park in Henderson County and at Bank Creek in Buncombe County. While working with appropriate partners, we will place signage at boat access locations to alert river users to the construction downstream. We will also advise the public through other means such as the NC DOT website, social media, including Twitter. Boats will be funneled into a safe passage lane because causeways are needed for bridge replacement and construction. To reach the causeways, access roads will be built. I'm a slide behind. There we are. That's the sign that we would put in at the parks. To reach the causeways, access roads will be built on I-26 within NC DOT right-of-way by using, and using retaining walls to stay off private property and to protect the natural resources.
I'm sorry, can I just ask, what, what are the access roads for?
Excuse me?
To get down to the construction site.
To get down to the construction site.
Are they just temporary?
Yes, temporary.
Okay, so that's part of the construction?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
On NC DOT right-of-way. There will be one causeway on each side of the river. On the east side, the causeway will be completely installed during the first stage of construction and run 318 feet along the bank, extending 52 feet into the river. It will be removed as construction progresses. On the west side, the causeway will be built in stages until it reaches 320 feet in length. Depending on the work, the causeways will also have additional short extensions of 10 to 21 feet into the river. Again, safety for the river users, for the boaters, the kayakers, the rafters, is a priority. They will be funneled into this safe passage lane. During the final stage of construction, a causeway will be built to remove the center columns and the existing bridge. A safe passage lane will be adjusted for the final phase. Hydraulic experts have examined how the causeways will impact river levels and the depth for the river users, and the result is less than one inch of rise in the water level during an average rain event. And during a 100-year storm, 100-year flood event, it would be less than a foot. This would, the rise would decrease with a distance of six inches for a mile upstream, and so on and so forth. There is no anticipated flooding downstream of the river. Thank you again for listening. We will be conducting small group meetings to inform stakeholders and local businesses. And on Monday, we will hold a public meeting from 4:00 to 7:00 for the entire project at Biltmore Baptist Church.
I have one quick question. You may not be able, you may not be prepared to answer it. So, it sounds like you've taken care of the river and the river users.
Yes, ma'am.
How about the bats that live under the bridge?
I am not prepared, but we are working, and I personally am working with the US Fish and Wildlife Service.
Right.
We've heard in those, we have, NC DOT has funded a study, and we are working with them.
Yeah. So, just so everybody knows, we do actually have a little endangered bat that lives here. It's not supposed to be.
I believe there are, I believe there are two, and not to mention mussels in the river.
Right.
We are definitely considering everything.
They're on it. Fish and Wildlife's on it.
All right. Okay. Anyone else have any bat or non-bat-related questions?
Or mussel questions.
Mussels. Thank you for making the trip down here. We appreciate it.
I mean, down to this building house here, to this meeting.
I mean, that's helpful, because we're probably going to get a lot of questions about that. Or maybe they'll go to Fletcher. All right, so that concludes presentations and reports. Just a long, long presentation and reports. We have one public hearing item, and I see Sasha is here to present it. This is a public hearing to consider the conditional zoning of One Brookside Circle from RM6 Residential Multifamily Low Density District to Residential Expansion Conditional Zone for 70 residential units and three buildings with a clubhouse. Almost did that in one breath.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council.
Nothing.
I am Sasha Vertinsky with the Planning and Urban Design Department, and I'm here to talk about One Brookside Circle. This is a conditional zoning. This land is in, this site is in Camlar. It's west of 40. It is in the city limits. I've been asked that question. It is currently zoned RM6, and that, so the conditional zoning is to residential expansion CZ. This is Smokey Park here. At the south of, south of the lot, there is a strip of highway business zoned, commercial development to the south of it, between the site and Smokey Park. Currently on the site, there is a house, and it's, the majority of the site is a wooded site. It's 5.89 acres. I don't know if I said that before. And it is a, the site, it's, it's got some slope to it, topography, so it's kind of sloping down towards Smokey Park Highway. The proposal is for three buildings with 70 units in them and a clubhouse building, as stated before. There's also 105 parking spaces as a part of this development. Let's see. There are, for access and parking, as I was saying, 105 parking spaces. There are sidewalks that are connecting all these buildings. There's also a sidewalk that is connecting this road. So, how this site is accessed, currently its address is Brookside Circle, and it, to use Brookside Circle wouldn't be very safe. We'd have to be cutting through some public land. So, there is actually a lighted intersection, a street, a traffic light with West.
Your finger's not showing.
Sure. It's not.
Your finger's, yeah.
At West Ridge Shopping Center. So, that's where the food line is, and there's a Sonic, and a bank, and a Mexican restaurant. There's a little bunch of things right there. It's right before Asbury Road and Sand Hill Road, if that makes sense. So, using that street, that traffic light with the intersection is a much more safer way to get in and out of this development. This would be a private road, platted, so that it's, you know, it's permanent through that property.
What? So, I, I just, I don't understand when you say a private road. I mean.
It's not a publicly maintained road.
And it's gonna, but, but whose property is it?
Well, so, so this West Ridge Park Shopping Center has, and I can go back.
Well, it's not an easement, though. That's the thing it says.
No, yeah.
Oh.
It's pla, it's platted, private road. So, it's not an easement, and easements, you know. So, this is West Ridge Shopping Center Road, which is a, you know, an addressed road, a private road. But this, this public, private, the second private road would come off here and go into this site. They have an owner's affidavit from the West Ridge Shopping Center owners, and they are, you know, negotiating with them for this.
Okay. Okay.
It's, yeah.
I get it.
It's the safest way to get in and out of this.
Okay.
The plan has required buffers, property buffers. This land to the north on both sides is residentially zoned land. There's a subdivision here called Brigadoon, and so they're required to have these 20-foot buffers on both sides. The landscaping complies with this plan. They're not asking for any conditions around that. They also have all the open space that's required. Let's see. In this district, we have design and operational standards. They're, they're somewhat minimal. The maximum height in this district is 60 feet. These buildings would be 48 feet. They're actually split-level, so on one side is three stories and the other side is four. It works with the grade of the land, and the three-story side would be towards the neighborhood. So, the neighborhood would actually get less height, and the greater height is facing the commercial kind of side towards Smokey Park Highway. Let's see. So, this is an affordable housing project, and the applicant is here, can speak more to that. The, I outlined some of the conditions in the report, and you have a list of conditions. For the most part, they're very standard. I will say, the Brigadoon Neighborhood Association has been very active as part of this project and came to staff with concerns and has worked with the developer. They requested a fence along their property line, which the developer has agreed to, and that is in the conditions. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this project and recommended in favor of it. They had some concerns about the parking lot, which I don't, let me grab mine. They had some concerns about the parking lot that is not this developer's property. And this is a better view. This is not, so, sorry, it's a little grainy. So, they were interested in seeing some islands, kind of landscaped islands along this new private road. On the other side, it is a curbed, it has curb and gutter on the other side. I spoke with our transportation staff. They were not as concerned. They feel like it's going to be pretty clearly delineated. The applicant didn't, at the P&amp;Z meeting, couldn't make promises on the behalf of the owner, and it doesn't, still at this point, not ready to commit to that. I think overall, it's still a good project. And given that transportation staff is comfortable with it as it's designed, that gives me a level of comfort. Generally, staff finds that it's compatible with surrounding zoning. Higher-density housing can often be a great buffer between a commercial corridor and single-family zoning. It gives you kind of, it's not commercial zoning right up against the neighborhood. It can buffer some of the noise, and the traffic impacts are mitigated because it's using this shopping center for traffic. We also found that it complied with the comprehensive plan and the council vision, and one of the great things about this location is that you're near schools, grocery stores, other services. There isn't a bus line here at this point. You know, maybe in the future there will be. So, and, you know, that completes my presentation.
I'll just also mention, and it's on our agenda later, the, the HCD.
The funding piece of it.
Yeah. We committed a, voted to recommend a Housing Trust Fund loan for this project.
And that's later, right?
It's on our agenda.
Yeah.
Under New Business.
Sasha, how many, you talked about 5.89 wooded acres. You estimate how many trees are going to get cut down for this thing? Just roughly about?
I don't. I don't, we don't have a tree survey. I think they have a, I don't know. But they do have an incentive to keep as many as they can because you get credits for keeping trees. And it's, given, especially as an affordable housing project, they want to reduce their costs as much as possible, so.
Any other questions of Sasha before I open the public hearing? Okay. Oh, does the applicant want to speak or no? Or wait till later?
I'm listening.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Gibby Mead. I'm the president of Workforce Hofstad, the developer of this proposed affordable housing community. I just simply want to please request the council's favorable consideration of my rezoning application. I think it's a reasonable one. It certainly will facilitate the provision of much-needed affordable housing. As you know, there's not a lot of opportunity in the Asheville area to locate new affordable housing, and I was happy that we were able to come up with a creative approach to, you know, making this work on what currently is a non-conforming site and create a situation that potentially could be very advantageous and convenient for working families, given that they'd be able to literally walk to Food Line and Rite Aid Pharmacy and the YMCA and the different banks and restaurants that are right there in the West Ridge Shopping Of course, it does comply with the comprehensive plan and along with the 2036 Vision consideration. So, again, I'll request approval of this application, and certainly would want to be willing to answer any questions that you might have.
This probably is more relevant to the next, when we talk about the funding. But when will you find out about whether your entire funding package is approved and you'd be able to go forward?
Mid-August.
This year?
That's right, mid-August. Yeah, the Housing Finance Agency is very consistent in terms of, that's their annual schedule for making a public announcement of their federal housing tax credit awards.
Okay. And you're feeling pretty good about it?
As you know, it's a very competitive process, and who knows? I just, my fingers are crossed.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, you've hit a lot of the markers. You're close to the grocery store, transit line, so on and so forth.
Yeah.
I had a quick question. Same with Sasha. Do you have any sense of, sir, how many, how many trees you expect to cut down on this in order to develop the site?
I don't.
I mean, it is currently an undeveloped site, right? That's my.
Right, I was asking how many trees.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm just thinking in terms of if it's already just a wooded site or it's been cleared or not, but it looks like it's.
I mean, there is a single-family house on the site, so, I mean, parts of the parcel are cleared, parts are not.
All right. Okay. Okay, any other questions for the applicant before I open the public hearing? Okay, all right.
Thanks.
We'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this, please raise your hand. Please introduce yourself, and you will have three minutes to speak, and the lights on the lectern will tell you when it's time to stop. Anyone wishing to speak on this? And I will close the public hearing then. Do I have questions, comments, or a motion?
I move to approve the conditional zoning request for residential multifamily low-density district to residential expansion conditional zone for the Ameren Apartments project with the requested conditions, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest as, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in that, one, the project provides much-needed affordable housing, and, two, the development is well-located such that residents will have good access to schools, community services, and commercial businesses.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you. Now, we will go, oh, we're going to dodge out of this topic and go to human relations, and then we'll come back to it. So, under unfinished business, we have an ordinance establishing a human relations commission, and Kelly Whitlock from Legal is going to come talk to us about the proposed ordinance, which I believe was already.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Kelly Whitlock. I'm the deputy city attorney for the City of Asheville, and I'm here tonight to request council's consideration of an ordinance establishing a human relations commission for Asheville. In May of 2017, council provided a directive to establish such a commission to deal with issues relating to equity and human relations in the city. North Carolina state law authorizes cities to create a human relations program and to appoint a commission to carry out such a program. In pursuant to the statute, a human relations program is devoted to certain purposes, and they're listed in the statute, but, such as promoting the equality of citizens, improving communication among the races, and encouraging equity in employment. In furtherance of its directive, city council appointed a Blue Ribbon Committee to provide recommendations to council about the mission, scope, and duties of a commission. The Blue Ribbon Committee held approximately 12 meetings and presented its final recommendations to y'all at your February 13, 2018, meeting. So, based on the recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Committee and state law, we drafted an ordinance creating this commission for the city, and we also worked with the vice mayor and with our city's equity and inclusion manager, and we incorporated their comments into the ordinance as well. and we incorporated their comments into the ordinance as well. So, it just basically, in sum, the ordinance which is before you includes an Establishment and Purposes section, a Definitions section, and a Duties, Membership, and Rules of Procedure section. The ordinance provides for 15 members that are appointed by council and membership is intended to reflect the groups of individuals that the human relations program is intended to assist and protect, which include individuals from different races, ethnicities, sexual orientation, and socioeconomic backgrounds. So, the duties of the commission will include making policy recommendations to city council which promote and improve human relations and advance equity, supporting the city's Office of Equity Inclusion, providing a forum where residents can raise issues and complaints relating to human relations in the city, engaging the community in the promotion of human relations, and promoting and improving human relations and advancing equity in the following areas, which include public safety, educational art and cultural opportunities, economic development, health and human services, and finally, housing. The proposed ordinance was presented to council's Boards and Commissions Committee on March 13 and the committee recommended adoption of the ordinance, as long as we incorporated a few of their changes, which we did, and they are incorporated in your final version that's before you tonight. So, that is in brief summary of the ordinance and if you, I'm here to answer any questions, otherwise that concludes my presentation.
Any questions?
I guess I've got a couple of questions. We've gotten some emails, well, let me put it this way. So, the Blue Ridge, the Blue Ridge, Blue Ribbon Committee's recommendations were, had a lot more stuff in them than this has, so can you talk a little bit about, you know, sort of what, what that's in those recommendations is, is addressed or not addressed in here? And I guess part of what I'm getting to is, just so we're all on the same page about, you know, legal authority versus not legal authority for the commission to do certain things.
And I could address the, the Blue Ribbon Committee's recommendations is quite lengthy and just when you're drafting an ordinance, you can't have it be that many pages, but it largely tracks all of the recommendations that the Blue Ribbon Committee put forward. I did put in the ordinance, based on some comments at the Boards and Commissions Committee, that city council desires that with the commission in carrying out its duties and responsibilities be guided and influenced by those, by those recommendations. So, we've got that document incorporated in here.
You said said, right?
Well, I'll just say, I don't think the Blue Ribbon Committee came forward with anything substantially that was outside the statutory authority. I think some of the, I don't, I think that they did a great job. I think that there's been some questions about whether or not that the Human Relations Commission can make binding decisions or policy decisions and that's just not within the scope of their authority under the general statutes. But, this particular ordinance follows all of, everything that's in the general statutes and all of the broad categories that were in the Blue Ribbon Committee's recommendation.
And maybe I'll just hone in on one particular thing that I had a question about, which is the, the Blue Ribbon Committee's recommendations included, and you have the authority in here, included a recommendation about providing a forum for citizens to come with, to raise issues and bring concerns around racial equity. I read the recommendations to be broader than the authority that is here, that somehow the city would be in a position to investigate and bring parties together and maybe hold a hearing and things like that. And I'm, I'm not seeing that authority in here, so I'm, that's, if that, if that is not, if that is not, if that authority is not authorized by state law, then I just want to try to clarify that now before we get six months down the road and those expectations are not being met.
And state law prohibits local governments from regulating private employers or regulating public accommodations. But, so, that means that this commission cannot rule on a grievance per se and regulate a private employer, but they can certainly hear a complaint and grievances and help to resolve them in any other way.
And that, that scope can be developed once the ordinance is passed by the commission itself?
That's correct.
Yeah, it's not on, so, well, so first we need a motion to adopt and then I'll take comment.
I'd make the motion to adopt the, this new, new board.
All right, we have a motion, do I have a second? All right, I have a second, Brian? And, yeah, I'm just telling Maggie. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion? Okay.
No public.
All right. We beat them down with very long presentations at the beginning. Everyone's exhausted. All right. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, back, now we're going to go back to the new business agenda and our first item is a resolution authorizing the approval of Housing Trust Fund Loans to Workforce Homestead Inc. and Mountain Housing Opportunities, Inc. Chris, Chris, how do you say your last name? Ignore the H. Gotcha, okay.
Thank you.
Should be a K or something.
No, it should be in the planning department.
Oh, yeah. Just because we can't say anyone's name in the planning department.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Chris Natten, I'm with the Community Development Department and tonight, I'm going to present to you two Housing Trust Fund Loan applications we received in late February, early March. Both of these applications were reviewed by the HCD Committee on March 23 and were recommended to you for review. We have a total of $2.3 million, $2.4 million in ask with a total of 130 affordable units in two projects. One of which you've already seen tonight is the, excuse me, Workforce Homestead, Amaranth Apartments in the Inca Canlar area. It has 70 affordable rental units, all serving 60% area median income or less, which is a tax credit project. Their ask is for $600,000 with an adjusted amortized, amortization over a period of 20 years. The second project is Klingman at Hilliard, which is Mountain Housing Opportunities on Klingman Avenue. And this project is in downtown, their ask is for $1.8 million for 60 units of affordable housing. This is in a mixed equity and mixed-use facility and is also a tax credit project. This project, it will be, have an affordability period in perpetuity, which is approximately 99 years. And that ask is to be for interest only and those Housing Trust Fund Loans will stay into the project for, for that period of time. Give you a little, both, both of these applicants were evaluated based on their own merit and we can see that, you know, just to give you a quick rundown, again, Amaranth Apartments, it's located next to the West Ridge Shopping Center off of Smokey Park Highway. It's close to several amenities such as shopping, pharmacy, YMCA, and it is on a corridor that is being marked for transit extension. It is being currently served by a Buncombe County sort of connector route or something of that nature from what we've discovered in our last meeting. So, that is in the radar to connect that with transit. It has 70 units and with a $600,000 loan, that comes to about $8,500 subsidy per unit. And the subsidy per year over the 30-year period is $285 per unit per year. Again, this is over a 30-year term. They are, the applicant is requesting an adjusted, an adjusted amortization term in order to meet the 1.5, 1.15 DCR, which is the minimum requirement for low-income housing tax credit. So, we can tell that the subsidy is definitely needed for this project. However, at the end of the term, that principal will be paid off in full. Does have energy efficiency, again, it has the transit amenities and this scored a 90 in our underwriting scoring. Klingman at Hilliard for Mountain Housing Opportunities, again, is a mixed income and also a mixed-use facility. It has 80 residential units, 60 of those will be for affordable, serving households 60% AMI or less. Again, this is a tax credit and it will have 5,000 square feet of commercial space. This ask at $1.8 million equates to $30,000 subsidy per affordable unit. And, over the 99-year period, it equates to $303 per unit per year. The term for this is in perpetuity, which means that $1.8 million will stay in the project for as long as that remains affordable and they'll pay 2% interest only on that loan. And again, that affordability period will run with that term and be in perpetuity, which is, you know, technically 99 years will be how it will be written. It is in downtown, it will have energy efficiency, transit amenities, and the underwriting score was 85. The, the goals that, that the, both of these projects hit are, cover in the strategic operating goals, focus area number two, affordability and economic mobility, both goal number one of expanding Asheville, Asheville's supply of quality affordable homes for current and future residents, including promotion of affordable housing located close to jobs, the downtown district, and transportation. Also supports the goal number two of improving citizen equity by reducing disparity gaps with an emphasis on education and socioeconomic mobility. The last piece to this, I guess that's, that's about it and I'm here to answer any questions for you.
I had a few, sorry, Chris, could you?
Yes, sir.
So, help me understand, I have a couple of questions about the program and then a couple specifics over here. So, in terms, in terms of the application process for both of these projects, do you guys have an open call or do people come to you for applications? How, could you just give a really quick idea of how that, how that works?
Yeah, sure. We now, previously, prior to last year, we did a, once a year, we did a call for applications. Now, we are in a rolling, receiving applications on a rolling basis. So, you can apply throughout the fiscal year of 1819 in order to be eligible for these funds.
Got it, okay. And in terms of, I mean, I know Mountain Housing, in terms of the other gentleman here, the other developer, have they done any work here in Asheville before? Have they, have you?
We have not dealt with them with the Housing Trust Fund, although the developer has, has approached, the Asheville Regional Home Consortium for funds, has been awarded in Transylvania County. However, we have not worked directly with the developer, unless if I'm mistaken, if it's well before my time. But as far as I know, no.
And I will, to VJ, I'll just say, we, the, the home consortium did award home funds to the same developer for a project in Transylvania County. And my understanding is, this company has developed affordable housing in, maybe even across the state, but other projects here as well.
And just a couple of questions again, because this is sort of my first time going through one of these and it's sort of set up in a way that, that there can be some kind of comparison here and, and understanding kind of the amount that's being asked here. So, I mean, as I, as I look at the project over here, the, the one on Smokey Park, you've got 18 units at 30%, 10 units at 50%, 42 units at 60%. They're asking for $600,000. And, and the other, in the, in the Mountain Housing one, you've got, I think you've got 15 at 30%, 9 at 50%, 36 at 60%. So, so in terms of kind of like, and we're talking about 70 units in, in the Smokey Park and 80 units in the, in the Mountain Housing here. And I'm just, in terms of kind of like what's being, and, you know, 600,000 versus 1.1.8 million. So, so help me understand kind of the, as someone who's looking at this, I can kind of say to myself, say, wow, why is, why is the Mountain Housing one being asked for so much more out of the Housing Trust when you're getting sort of 80 units that are, be arguably less affordable than the, the 70 units that are being done at Smokey Park?
Yeah, it's, it's a very good question and looking historically, I mean, the Housing Trust Fund policy currently has a maximum of $20,000 per unit ask with a maximum of $1 million. However, I will say that in, in previous years, we have gone outside of that policy based on certain nuances of the project and therefore gets recommended for funding and then eventually approved. So, council in the past has approved projects outside of the scope of that policy. However, you know, we do try our best to, to, you know, I don't know how to say this, but, you know, we look for that $20,000 mark per unit.
But why is it, why are you, why are you guys, why is it different here for you all in terms of recommending, recommending that for this particular project, the 30,000?
Well, it's a good question. It's, it's a good project, it's downtown, it does offer 60 units, so it offers some things and affordability period in perpetuity. So.
The difference is affordability in perpetuity versus the one that's 30 years?
20 years, right.
20 or 30?
Yeah, it's a 20-year term, but it's a tax credit project, so it's 30 years. So, we will have a 30-year period on that.
Yeah, and so, VJ, part of, we, we talked about this at HCD, part of what you're seeing here is, is the cost of downtown land. And if it's, you know, if it's important and it was for us at HCD to continue to have affordable housing downtown as opposed to, you know, pushing affordable housing out, this is an opportunity to do that. One, I will say that one of the other projects that we've made an exception on in terms of this $20,000 per unit is the, is the development right across the street at Parks Maintenance. So, you're, you know, the, it's, it's.
That one's, somebody else is doing that one.
Yeah, right, somebody else is doing that, but that's our land that.
But that's a 50-year too.
Yeah. So, we do go outside of that policy and, and we, again, we thought, as a committee, we thought this project was, was important enough. I will also say that the home, in terms of home funds, this project, the two projects, the two big projects that got funded with home funds, which again are not our, it's not city funds, these are federal funds, were this Mountain Housing project and the Transylvania project. So, the, the, the home consortium, which is made up of local government representatives from, help me out, Chris, Madison, Buncombe, Transylvania, and Henderson Counties, also viewed this as a, as a great project that, that needed to be, that needed support.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just sort of trying to figure out the numbers. I mean, as the development costs, again, kind of looking back at this, the Smokey Park, the loan percent of total development cost is 6% versus 14% downtown. So, that, that, I guess what I'm trying to get at here is, is understand, you know, we have limited Housing Trust Fund dollars, right? And, and again, I'm not a developer, right? I don't do the construction, I don't build houses. So, but, you know, I do have the sort of fiduciary responsibility over here and these seem, again, looking at projects that arguably are in different areas and I don't mean to suggest otherwise, but in terms of looking at some of these numbers, these percentage terms, it just seems to me that there's a lot more being subsidized in the downtown one than the one on Smokey Park. And in terms of sort of our bang for our buck, in terms of affordable housing units, it's there's, you know, it, it just stands out to me. And again, those, I, you all are the experts on this, so that's, you know, why I wanted to kind of raise the question here. And again, and my own perspective, I understand that the perpetuity thing, 99, but, I mean, 99 compared to 30, you know, when we're talking about, you know.
Well, no, I mean, that's a big difference and I will, you know, I've been at conferences, I've been saying this since I got back from this conference, actually it was the National League of Cities Conference that Keith and I went to in the fall. There are, there are a number of affordable housing advocates in there in the local, in the local government world that say, if you're not making affordable housing permanent, you're not making affordable housing.
Well, but let me ask this question in terms of construction, do you anticipate these structures lasting for 99 years? Like, is this the kind of thing that's.
No, but isn't it, isn't it by a deed restriction? It's to the land. That's, I thought how it works, so.
Well, we would, I, I believe we would write the deed restriction for 99 years, you know, whether the, the. whether the, the construction, the building.
No, yeah, it won't.
Exists for 99 years. But at the time of, if, say that that structure no longer existed, I believe that they would pay that loan back at that point if they were not able to meet that criteria, we have the ability to call on that loan.
Well, and the more likely scenario is that, you know, after 30 years, the building is going to need significant upgrades and renovation. And at that point, if, if it's not in perpetuity, that is a point in which a developer or an owner can take it out of the affordable housing market, spruce it up, and, and put it on the, the regular market. That will not happen in this case. This building will have to continue to be maintained and used as affordable housing as long as, as long as the building is there.
Can I ask, are you?
I'm sorry.
So, a million eight plus six is 2.4, right? How, how much of that is coming out of the bond monies versus, you know, our capital? And, and the other developer said that they will know about the financing by August. Is that also true with Mountain Housing?
Yes.
So, so answer that question and then what's, what's, what's the plan to spend the rest of the $5 million?
They are both tax credit projects, so they are both in that competitive process right now. We'll know in August where the awards go. Typically, we only see one in Buncombe County, if any, you know, so it's likely maybe one of these projects will, will be funded. The way that we look at the funds and what we have, I mean, projected through the end of fiscal year 2018-19, the Housing Trust Fund is $570,000 without including CIP or bond funds. With CIP, we have approximately 1.2 million of, of CIP funds, with then bond funds, looking at the $5 million over six years, I average it to 850,000 per year. So if you look at it that way, I mean, depending on what pot we want to pull them from, you know, essentially, we have a gap of, well.
No, you'd have excess.
A little over 200,000. So you, if you depleted the, if you used all of the Housing Trust Fund and all of the CIP funds, you would have just $629,000 pulled from the bond funds.
Oh, so that, so that's the plan? You basically will take from the CIP and the Housing Trust Fund balance first and then the remainder, whatever, whatever the shortfall is, we take for bonds, as opposed to taking it all from the bond money?
That has not been decided yet.
Oh, it hasn't, okay.
No.
That was mine.
No. We just know that we have those pool of funds.
Yeah, I mean, we know we have funds available with the combination of these three.
Correct.
Okay, that's what.
And then the figure that you have for the bond funds there, that's just the annual, essentially, of the 25 million of the bond funds, that is sort of the annual allocation of the $5 million that we set aside for the Housing Trust Fund.
Correct. That's the way I averaged it here and I averaged it for six years, since we have about six years remaining.
Okay. I just don't, I want everybody to know that we have more than $850,000 in bond funds for the Housing Trust Fund.
It's in the italics.
Just want to note, I realize, we're considering these together, I would just ask if there's any way we might be able to consider these separately in terms of any motion.
Any reason why we can't do that?
No.
Okay. That's fine. Any other questions?
I will say they're bottled up in one resolution, resolution two now, so they'd have to be, we'd probably have to re-draft those, but I don't think that's a problem.
Okay. Are there any other questions? If not, I'm going to entertain a motion on one of them. Who wants to?
Sure, sure. Yeah, so I make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the approval of Housing Trust Fund loans to, we'll start with Workforce Homestead, Inc.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion? This is for the Smokey Park Highway one. You guys are quite a bunch tonight. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I'll do a second motion. Also, a motion authorizing the approval of Housing Trust Fund loans to the Mountain Housing Opportunities project presented for Clingman Avenue.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Keith gets a second.
Keith gets a second.
Okay, anyone wishing to comment on the motion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay, then, thank you. That concludes that part of it. We're going to do the fees and charges. Tony patiently waiting here. This is ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2018-19 fees and charges. This will be rolled into our budget, but we do these first, so staff knows where we're landing on these, so they can build them into the budget. Take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Tony McDowell, I'm the city's budget manager. One of the first items that we bring forward to you each year as a part of the budget process is adoption of a set of fees for the upcoming fiscal year. We typically bring the fees and charges to you in April, so that we can go ahead and get your approval of those for a couple of reasons. One is that it allows us to build into next year's budget any additional revenue that may come from those fee increases. And it also allows us to begin communicating out to our customers any of those changes that may take place at the start of next fiscal year. So the packet before you tonight is very similar to the packet of fees that we brought forward the last few years. I'll highlight a few things to you. On the water fees, again, it's a continuation of the type of modest rate increases that we brought forward the last few years. Residential fees are proposed to go up by 2% in the package that we have for you. And then stormwater fees, again, a continuation of the fee increases in that area as well, of 5% annually for homeowners for that fee increase. The third item I'd highlight is the, the fee adjustments that are related to development services. The city hired a consulting firm, Matrix Consulting, to review our development services fees and specifically look at our cost recovery for our different areas of development services. And the fee proposals that are before you tonight represent some of the recommendations from that study. And specifically, we're looking at increasing fees in the areas of planning and zoning and site development to bring us closer to full cost recovery in those two areas. The packet of fees tonight have, have been reviewed by the Finance Committee. They were looked at at the Finance Committee's February, March meetings, and the committee did review and endorse those fees at that meeting. And one other thing I would like to highlight, we did discuss some potential fee changes in the parking fund today earlier at your budget work session. Those are not part of the packet tonight. If we move ahead with those, those would be brought forward with budget, the manager's proposed budget in May. So with that, happy to answer any questions. There's folks here from the departments who can answer questions as well.
I didn't see solid waste in here. Is it, is it in here somewhere and I'm not seeing it? Or are we not raising fees or?
No, we didn't recommend an increase.
Not raising fees, so these are just the increases, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the new fees as outlined for fiscal, fees and charges for fiscal year 2018 to 19.
Second.
Okay, I'd like to point out, we already did the most controversial ones and that was tennis. Right. Okay. All right, is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion? Nope, not that we've already done tennis.
I know, now that we've got the hard one out.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So that was five to two. Okay, we've got to raise our hands for Maggie. Ready? All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, and all those opposed, raise your hand. Okay, okay. Kathy's looking a little perplexed. So, all right, we have, the last item on the formal agenda is boards and commissions, and I'll hand it over to the Vice Mayor.
Okay, so we had some interviews this afternoon for two open positions for the Audit Committee. And just to remind folks, we are, the city is developing a new, a new committee, an Audit Committee, and so this will be the first iteration of that. And we selected the two CPAs on the committee, I don't know when it was, a month ago, I guess. And we interviewed three candidates, Mr. Carvier, Mr. Powell, and Ms. Miller. And so what we do here is we vote on that. So I'm going to ask Shanika to start and ask you to select two, two of your candidates and then the majority will be selected.
I select Mr. Scott Powell and Ms. Gail Miller.
And Miller? Hold on one second. Two?
Miller and Carvier.
Key?
For Audit Committee.
Yes.
Powell and Miller.
Okay.
I'm Powell and Carvier.
I am Powell and Carvier.
Powell and Miller.
Powell and Miller.
Who, what was that, sorry?
Powell and Miller.
Oh, you're all telling.
Okay.
Powell and Carvier.
Powell and Carvier. Okay, so I definitely have Powell and I show four and four with Carvier and Miller. So, okay. So what do we do? So we definitely do Powell.
Yeah.
So now we go back through, I guess, and just pick one.
That's right.
So, of Carvier or Miller.
Yeah, that's Miller.
Miller.
No.
Carvier.
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 Okay. All right, so it will be Powell and Gail Miller. So we're looking forward to getting that work started. The Multimodal Transportation Commission, we are going to re-advertise for those openings at the request and recommendation of the Multimodal Transportation Commission. The Riverfront Area Redevelopment Commission has one opening. We actually interviewed three candidates, but unfortunately, we discovered that one of the candidates, Ms. Spells, does not live within the city limits. And typically, our policy is that we select folks who are in the city limits, so keep that in mind when, when you're making your vote. So we, so the three candidates we interviewed were Ms. Spells, Mr. Schaller, and Ms. Schenker. So I'm going to start with Vijay and ask that you give me one vote.
You did it by last name, so.
Spells, Spells, Schaller, and Schenker.
Wait, you just told us.
We can't, we can't vote for.
Well, we can, we can, it's a policy. We, we typically do not want people that live outside, but we have previously selected, so I'm giving you that opportunity if you want to. However, it is contrary to our policy.
That for Bings County appointments, and we prefer Ms. Spells to the county.
Yeah, I mean, she would have an opportunity to be appointed by the county body, but. Vijay?
Schaller.
Okay. Schaller, I'm Schaller too.
Schaller.
Schaller.
Key?
Before I vote, is there a way to send a recommendation letter from an individual council member for Ms. Spells to the county?
Sure, I'm sure there's a, they can take that time to ensure you.
You could just say when you have a vacancy.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this, this is, this is very difficult. Yeah, I think I also would be willing to step out of the policy for, for Ms. Spells.
Okay.
I'll go with Ms. Spells.
Okay. Mr. Schaller is selected. So again, we, we are enjoying some incredible applicants and we really appreciate the fact that the citizens are stepping up. These are very difficult decisions for a council to make, so we keep encouraging as much public engagement as you can. And even if you are not selected to be on boards and commissions, we appreciate your participation in other ways.
Okay. This concludes the formal agenda. I have a couple of people signed up to speak, and the first is Ashley Cooper. And speakers have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. So I want to thank you for some of the decisions that you're making and the ways that you're looking at both the whole system that you're governing, but also bringing up, and I appreciate Council Mayfield, how you brought up the data from the Energy Audit. You know, what did we learn from that and how are we applying that? And I just really want to ask that as you keep moving forward, particularly with this budget deficit and having to assess what of the many departments, I mean, we just heard today from departments that are asking for more staff in order to do what they're charged to do. I ask that transparency and accountability really be of utmost top priority. And I was just with, Dante Bryant was just in town doing some diversity training and a keynote speech here, and he, in addition to having like six or seven master's degrees, he runs the, or he's a part of the Urban Research Institute and he oversees the research division of the Mecklenburg County Criminal Justice System, so it's a couple million-dollar research program. And he said there's three core, he called it the Holy Trinity to value and critique of a program, that you need to make sure you have clinical expertise in that particular area. You need to make sure that you're doing research that's consistent with best practices and a very strong evaluation of the outcomes. And then the third is that you need to make sure the client or the end user or the person most directly impacted by the program, if they're not on the front end of developing the program, then they're actively participating and evaluating its effectiveness. And so in addition to this budget, y'all have some really significant policy decisions that need to be made around the fact that our police department is demonstrating that there are issues within the system. And your call for a third-party review says that you acknowledge that there are some challenges that need to be looked into. And so how you're going to be using best practices, using research that is evaluated with data and how you're following up on that data and having the people most impacted involved, I just ask that you're really specific about that through this whole process. And I, it leads a question as a citizen, like, I'm not clear, I know your strategic priorities in the plan include things like a diverse community and a well-planned and livable community, but how do the decisions that you make fall into these core strategic areas and how are you communicating that to the public? For instance, transportation and accessibility is a core strategic priority, and so therefore it seems really essential that the extension of hours to the transit system is highly considered. And tourism is such our little value baby here as far as generating revenue and income, but yet service providers aren't able to get home from tourist jobs in the city and, you know, even your staff, only 25% of city officials are living here. So the need for all of these pieces of the dot to really be connecting with each other. And when it comes to deciding whether the police department receives more funding, that 1.2 million and, you know, addition to its 26 million, the South Slope and the downtown unit are the areas of most concern. And so I just ask that you're really clearly talking to the people in those areas to find out what the needs are. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one other person signed up to speak and that is Sydney Bach.
Mayor Van Heim, I would like to have the privilege of addressing the council for 10 minutes. I have three people here who have volunteered their time. One is Mrs. Julia Noe.
Ms. Raisier, yeah.
The other is Mr. Roger McCready. And the third is Mrs. Patricia Bach.
All right, we'll let the press wave their time just this one time.
Let the one.
I'm just kidding. Sorry, go ahead, Percy.
I'm sorry, my hearing's, I think, shows that you. Some would contend that City Hall has tried to finance a champagne appetite on a beer budget. Even this evening, we heard your Housing Trust Fund staff acknowledged that their proposals are essentially taxpayer projects. And that is basically the reason that I'm here and was the reason that I was involved in the bond litigation. Some have suggested that Asheville's voters may have been unwittingly led down the primrose path by the former city manager, Gary Jackson, with help from the city council, to trot out a $74 million Trojan horse filled with freshly borrowed bond money that could help fund the city's bloated. fund the city's bloated operating budget, and also be used as a slush fund to cover up a municipal fiscal crisis that we all know is on the horizon. There will be no surprises about the issues that will be upcoming, in the upcoming budget discussions. However, thanks to the agreement that was just signed by the city in order to settle the bond litigation, City Hall operatives and this council can no longer expect that any bond issues and the funds from those bond issues will save it from having to deal with the city's budget crisis. Contrary to certain news media insinuations, the bond lawsuit was not dismissed involuntarily by the court. We proposed a settlement to the city, and this lawsuit was settled by joint agreement of all parties, and then jointly dismissed by the parties at their request. The settlement agreement filed into the court record contains two important restrictions that limit and control the use of any monies that may be derived from the sale of these bonds. By the way, I presume you have seen it, but here is the settlement agreement. And copies are certainly available through your council, or I can certainly give it to you. At paragraph four of the agreement, the city stipulates, and I quote, "The city further stipulates that it will likewise comply with the applicable provisions of the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Controlled Act, codified in North Carolina General Statute 159.7," et cetera. So what that means, as I appreciate it, is that the bond money can only be used for those capital improvements listed in the 2016 bond ballot. The funds cannot be diverted or used for any other purposes, such as city operating expenses. And secondly, all bond proceeds must be deposited into a separate capital project fund to account for the use of those bond proceeds for the specific purposes for which the bonds were issued. And I did not get up to speak to the issue about the affordable housing funding, but it looked like the diagram that was put up there suggested that there may be an attempt to take bond proceeds from the bond sales for affordable housing and commingle them with another project, with other funds for the project. And that may be something for you to discuss with your council, because it may not be appropriate. I don't know the answer to that. So all bond proceeds must be deposited into a separate capital project fund to account for the use of those proceeds, and they cannot be transferred to another capital account that is not directly a part of the purpose for which the capital project fund was established. At paragraph six, the city further agrees that this agreement shall be binding upon and in order to the benefit of the parties respective successes and assigns. Thus, the city administration, this council, and future administrations, and future Asheville city councils are now legally bound by these stipulations that were made by the city and filed into the court record. Of course, it should be made clear that any violation of these stipulations will result in immediate legal action to enforce the terms of our agreement. This is not meant to be a threat, it's a promise. So to paraphrase those classic lyrics made famous by Sting, I would end by saying, every budget you make, every tax you take, every vow you break, we'll be watching you. Every dollar you take, every bond you break, every cost you undertake, we'll be watching you. Oh, can't you see that cutting expenses is the key? How our poor hearts ache from all the waste you can make? Every project you undertake, every payment you make, every vote you take, we'll be watching you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a copy of the settlement agreement, if any of you wants to see it.
Can I just ask Robyn a question? Can I just ask Robyn a question?
Robyn certainly can make it available to you. But to suggest that it was just dismissed by the court is misleading to the public who would read the news media.
Thank you. Did you get that, Joel? He didn't do it. Okay. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak, but yes.
My name's Patrick Conan. I was a member of the City's Blue Ribbon Committee. I was caught a little off-guard. I wasn't expecting public comment before the motion, but I did want to say a few things to council and to the public at this point. I wanted to thank city council, and especially thank everyone in the community who supported and participated in the process of creating this HRC for Asheville. It was a lot of work to get to this point, but really, I think we all know, the real work starts now, now that the board is real. And I'm very hopeful that these recommendations can help create a space in Asheville for community ideas to be discussed, developed, to create a pipeline for some great solutions to come from our community and actually be put into action in our city. I think that this HRC can be a really critical tool for our citizens and for our city council. I think it allows us to analyze every city department, every program, from an equity perspective, continuing a lot of efforts that council is funding and continuing to fund as we look forward through the Equity and Inclusion Office. I believe this HRC could be a place to continue our progress as an open data city. A lot of our recommendations do tie into doing analysis, looking at numbers, and one of the proposed positions in equity and inclusion also will be tasked with facilitating a lot of that, which is very important when you have a volunteer committee for the city to provide support as well. All of that being said, I think it's important to state that this committee's not going to run itself. I think, like any city committee, we can set up a beautiful structure, but it's up to the community to participate in the process, to hear the call, to apply, to serve on the HRC, and also for people who aren't appointed, to bring good ideas and to participate in the process. At the same time, I think it's important that council takes steps to ensure that the public can trust and believe in this HRC as a real mechanism for change, because that's the biggest concern I heard throughout the process, was how is this really going to make a difference? So I think it's important for council to support the HRC, and also when they do make policy recommendations, really the key way that this, that this body can act. I just encourage council to carefully consider those recommendations when they come out, and I hope they do produce a lot of great recommendations for you. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Kim Roney. I'm a piano teacher who sits on the Multimodal Transportation Commission and the Transit Committee, but today I'm speaking for myself. I feel encouraged and very heard, and I want to thank you for re-advertising the multimodal seat. I want to also take this opportunity to thank Elias Mathis of the Transit Department for helping us to translate the public service announcement into Spanish, so that we could do more outreach into the community in a unique way that we're not currently doing as a regular thing. And also Sarah Tewilliger in the Clerk's office for helping with the public service announcements and doing outreach to our local independent radio stations. I think this is a great step forward, and just, I acknowledge that we have a really busy staff that's at full capacity all of the time, so thank you so much, and I'm hoping that this will be an example we can see in other boards and commissions as we get real about equitable representation, especially introducing underrepresented voices and inviting more people to the table.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have a closed session motion.
I move that Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons: to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina are not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statute. The law that makes information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31810A3. Statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A1. To consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect, with the city-client privilege between city and its attorney must be preserved. Statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A3. To establish or instruct the city staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the city in negotiating the terms of a contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease. Statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A5. To discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries, statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A4.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will adjourn from the closed session.